Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Hunt, call the January 4th, 2023 Planning Development and Environment Committee to order. As a reminder, we continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. For those attending remotely, you may notice a slightly different look to the virtual meeting software. Tonight is our first meeting using a new version of WebEx called WebEx Webinar. Please send the host a chat message or email the Clerk's Office at clerks@isicuaqua.gov if you have any questions or issues. I am here tonight with Council President Walsh and Councilmember Ray, who is a member of this committee, is excused this evening. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There will be a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and committee question and answer period on tonight's one agenda item. So we will start with public comments. Members of the public may address council at this time, in person or virtually, and those who are signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. I will check in with -- there are -- I will note that there are no members of the public in council chambers this evening, and I will check with the city clerk if there are any members of the public in the meeting virtually before I read the rest of the instructions.
Chair Hunt, no one has signed up previously, and no one is online waiting to speak.
Okay, then we will go past public comments at this time. I will check in again after our first item. And we have meeting minutes for the December 6th meeting. I didn't have any edits. Do you have any edits?
No.
Tell me to move the approval of the minutes. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, those are approved, and then we will go to our one item for this evening, which is the Contractor Code of Conduct, and I will hand it over to -- is it Director Dollywell?
Good evening, councilmembers. James Gray is here to do the presentation, so he's attending virtually.
Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome, James.
Thank you, and thank you for having me, councilmember. Are we ready?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
So we're here to present the Contractor's Code of Conduct this evening again. Next slide, please. So our purpose is to provide the committee some more information about our existing process for informing contractors about the restrictions and rules that they need to follow for doing work in the City of Isicuaqua. Next slide. We are requesting input from the committee on our existing pre-construction requirements If we could hold for just a moment for the clerk, I'm not sure we have our current presentation up. Chris, if we could check that, please?
One moment.
Councilmember, I wouldn't want to bore you with the same presentation we gave you last time.
No worries.
If you have it up, go ahead.
It's not in pretty presentation form, but this should work. Okay, is everyone able to see my screen?
We are not, unfortunately.
Okay, how about now?
Yes, we can see it. We can also see the frame around it.
I see that. Yeah, hey, okay, let me -- maybe I can keep rolling if I could, councilmember, until I see if Chris can get the presentation up. So our purpose is sharing with the committee our feedback that we've received on the draft Contractor Code of Conduct. We had a public meeting, and we're specifically requesting input from the committee on that draft. So we have three tiers of projects that we are -- that we are proposing to include for the notification purposes. They're tier ones, two, and three, and I'll talk about those in a little bit. We want to find out if those are acceptable, and if there are any additional items that the committee thinks should be included. So the proposed notice requirements are what we're talking about again for tier one, two, and three, and if we should have any additional items based on the committee's input that they've received from the public or by email. So we had a public meeting in December, a second public meeting in December, and we asked some questions that are up on the screen about their public's issues with construction, notice or format for signage, about types of projects, and what additional concerns that needed to be addressed. So we got quite a bit of feedback, both email and in person from the meeting and by phone calls, and a few things that popped up were primarily about notification, about regular notices of meetings, including how many people need to be included in the notification for a specific project. There was emphasis on the lack of response or action from the city on certain types of transportation projects. Inconsistent contractor response to safety issues was another one. We did hear, again, about lack of response from the city on some issues, safety issues and concerns that the public had on particular projects. And primarily, they need a clear point of contact for any project. So our proposal, again, and we shared this with the committee last time, was about keeping the noise levels down, keeping Isicuaqua clean, well-maintained, community-informed, and building in a safe manner, which is our primary goal. So we've formatted the code in a format that we would like to have basically postable, for lack of any better word, on job sites, and we tried to include it all in one page, so eight and a half by 14. And we want the contractor to sign this. It'll be posted at construction job sites. And a big piece that we got from the public was that they wanted to be able to get more information, like with a QR code. So our project tiers that we're proposing, and our largest tier would be something, a fairly major project, like, think a Costco or a middle school. And on that type of a project, we'd have a QR code posted on the Code of Conduct that the contractor would maintain, that you could scan if you walked up or drove up to the site, and it would give you information on what the schedule is, what the project's about, who the project contact is, if there's a 24/7 contact. That type of information you could get from that QR code. And the detail behind these four areas is in this Contractor Code of Conduct.
We have a question. If you could stay here for a moment, Council President?
Certainly.
Thanks. So I get the concept of what you're presenting here. I'd like to ask, what feedback you got about this being in a public notice sign? Like, did the public feel like that being in the public was important? Because I think when we had previously talked about some of this, it was, hey, we would get contractors to sign this during a pre-construction meeting, and we need to update the signage. I wasn't necessarily seeing that the Contractor Code was going to be signage. So was there any conversation about that portion?
Sure, it's a very good question, councilmember. Thank you. I think the idea is the signage that goes on the site would actually be the code, so the public could see what the code is right on the site, and it will serve two purposes. One of them is to remind the contractor and all the subcontractors, primarily people who come and go, what the operating rules are in the City of Isicuaqua, and the public can see it. But then also, the signature is there in the QR code, and the contact person's name and phone number is right on that signage. Now, the other piece that's important about this is this is, of course, not the only signage that's on a site. On a large job, there was probably a big four-by-four plywood reader board that's got multiple bits, pieces of signage that have to do with what's going on with the project, but we wanted to make sure that this Code of Conduct is actually posted publicly on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question. So again, this is acknowledged and signed by the contractor during the pre-construction meeting with the community planning and development staff. So a couple of things. We talked about tier one, two, and three, and we -- it's in the staff report to council. Tier one is a pretty small, simple project, like an internal tenant improvement, a single-family home, something small that wouldn't take any notification or notification of neighbors of those kind of things. Tier two is a medium-sized project that would take some kind of public notification, and it would have the Code of Conduct signed, and information would be on the site, but we wouldn't necessarily require the contractor to keep a database of schedule and detailed information and QR code that's scannable for the public. And then the tier three projects, which probably, we're thinking, is probably going to have the most input from the public or the most concern, would have all of the above, plus, they would include this database, that would include schedule, contact information, a QR code to scan for the public to get more information about it. And that's our direction, that's the direction that we need from council and the committee, is if we need additional items or if these tiers are acceptable, and what council thinks about that proposal. So after receiving our committee feedback, we're proposing to proceed with finalizing the draft code and bring it back to the committee in March for final recommendation before proceeding to the full council for adoption. And that's my presentation.
Great, thank you very much. I had one question, which was on the tiers. Those tiers, are they used in other parts of the code? I seem to recall that the 10 units is used elsewhere in the code, for example.
So, good question, councilmember. Thank you. I don't know that those specific tier breakdowns are used elsewhere in the code, certainly not with regards to this Code of Conduct. They are specifically for this Code of Conduct in this context.
Okay, thank you. I see Director Dollywell has additional comments.
Yeah, so, thank you, councilmembers. As the part of the proposed Title 18 draft, those are, you know, where we've distinguished between what are some SEPA thresholds and what are required to be LEED-certified and all that. Is it the 10-unit, is that threshold?
Yes, yeah, go ahead. So, just getting at, you know, I know this has been a long time coming and something that the community has wanted, but I want to dig into some of the whys of the tier one and tier two not having signage. So what happens right now if someone experiences a tier one or tier two construction project near them that's working after hours, that's loud, that has a broken pipe? How would they handle that now, and how would they handle that in the future?
So, another good question. Thank you, councilmember. It's the same process that we use currently, which is, they would call code enforcement, they would call, I know Public Works has utility, break lines, there's lots of ways to reach us. The thing that you wouldn't have, like, if you were building a house, say, down on Front Street on Infill Lot, we wouldn't require you to have a signage that has a 24/7 contact, right? So if you were working on a Saturday, then we would get a complaint that would come into the department that we would go out and investigate with code enforcement. The break with the tier two or tier three project is that you're going to have someone that you can call and talk to, for instance, the school district. You could talk to someone at the school district who's a project manager on some more frequent basis.
And in reality, most people don't know that there's a Public Works line or a code enforcement person that they can talk to, so they are more likely to call the police, I would assume. And if that's the case, do we have contact information for anybody who's doing construction projects, that if there are problems, then the police have a process for routing that back to code enforcement so that the problem can be taken care of?
And we do. We work very closely with IPD, and they know exactly, I think our code enforcement officer is Lori, and she's on speed dial with police chief, so, yeah, they communicate pretty regularly.
But I think it's important, just to be clear, that the police doesn't have a directory of private project contacts. They'll contact code enforcement, they'll contact Public Works. They have all of those, the on-call folks for Public Works, for example, if there's a water leak or something associated with that. But they're not, they don't have contact for individual private developments, the police.
Thank you, Wally.
Yeah, and the police wouldn't be the ones solving the issue anyway if it was somebody working on a Saturday that they're, or a Sunday that they're not supposed to, or any of that. It would all go back through a code enforcement type.
Okay, thanks. I didn't have any more questions at this time, so we will go check in with, if there's any public comment.
I have another one. I just came up with one.
Okay, go ahead.
This all is proposed to apply to only private projects. Can you talk through why that's the case, and whether there would be an option, or how difficult it would be to apply to private building projects as kind of one tier versus, I think, there's also this other concern about private right-of-way and road and other projects like that?
So if I could maybe turf that off to the city manager, I think he might have a better, might have a better grasp on what the plan is on that.
Thank you, Council President, Councilmember Hunt. Certainly, we want to make sure that the public has access on public projects as well. We already have some existing processes in place for that. We would certainly be happy to come at a future meeting and talk further about that, but the dynamics of public projects are usually different than private projects, so we're not proposing at this point that the public projects would be subject to this particular code. If you'd like us to talk about public projects at a future meeting, we'd be happy to do that.
I mean, I hear you. I also hear what the community is saying about this, and so I think understanding what some of those problems are are probably important in being able to make the decision. Because all I can do at this point is, you're saying there are different reasons. I don't really know how to parse that.
Different projects have different players involved. We have multiple departments involved. We have other agencies involved, and before we could come up with a policy, it's very hard because there's not one size fits all. And so we'd be happy to talk about that. We're not prepared to do that this evening because, as far as we're concerned, the issues are more complex. We already have, I think, good dialogue with the community. People know to contact the police generally. Again, mostly these are right-of-way issues. We don't necessarily, we're not building buildings mostly, but the right-of-way could be ours, it could be utilities, it could be the state's. And so before we want, we would want to have a policy. We would like to talk internally, we'd also like to talk with our partners, so the scope of this is larger than it is with the private companies. So if that's the committee's desire, we'd be happy to come back at a future meeting, but we're not prepared to address it this evening.
That's helpful. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? No. Okay, so at this time, we will, I will check in with the city clerk if there are any members of the public online. Also note that there are still no members of the public in council chambers.
Chair Hunt, we have no virtual attendees at the moment.
Okay, thank you. So I will, we will go past the public comment, and I will also note that written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isicuaqua.gov. So now we will discuss and make a recommendation, and we have the one question, which is about the tiers and then any additional direction. Do you like to start us off, Council President?
I guess maybe with a sense of what is the proposed process going forward? I know we had asked, when this came to us previously, that it go to the public and get a little bit of feedback, and you've done that, and I very much appreciate reading through all of those comments. But is there any sense that you'd like this to go before a commission or a board, or what's the next step?
Council President, Councilmember Hunt, you know, we've gotten a lot of feedback. We've gotten feedback from residents, we've gotten feedback from builders' associations. I don't know what additional feedback there is to be gotten. You know, certainly, this is not necessarily time-sensitive, so if the committee wished to have questions, we would bring it back. We don't believe this is something we can bring back in February, given the Title 18 discussion, but we could bring it back at a future meeting. Otherwise, if you're comfortable with it, there's no reason why this couldn't move forward to the council, and the action could be to adopt this code. Most of the provisions are included already under other requirements, so we think that if you wish to just adopt it, have the council adopt it, we would move forward at a staff level to implement it as it's been described. If you wish to have it be codified more specifically, we could do that too, but our feeling, based on the input we've received, this seems pretty straightforward to us, and if the council agrees, we'd rather just move on and have the council adopt it.
Okay. I was just making sure the feedback wasn't too, like, PPC over, hey, these are the areas that we think need adjustments and all of that. My general feedback is that a Contractor Code of Conduct is important for staff and the contracting team in a pre-construction meeting, and that it's important to lay out what those requirements are and all of that. And then the other part that's important is clear signage on location so that someone knows the contact information and knows the hours of operation and when the place should be quiet, and, you know, all of those things. So I'm not sure I 100% see the need to post a signed version of this. Maybe it will be useful for somebody as a public member or as a subcontractor. I'll trust you on that one. There was also, you know, questions from one of the building associations that said, hey, is this additional work for contractors to have? So I'm wondering if there is any commentary on that. It was something around the having to notify people that were 300 or 500 feet around. Is there a sense of whether that is current?
Sure, I can take that one, James. So the Title 18 is under review, right? So we can figure out what to put in the code once we know what notice requirements we have. So right now, our notice requirements are more focused on when we're doing permitting. So for stuff that goes through land use approval, there are different levels that require a circulation of a mailed notice. We are changing it to 500 feet from 300 feet. We're including not just the property owners but residents. So if you have an apartment building, you will have to notify all the residents and that and all that. The question, I think, for master builders is, it's going to require, for larger projects only, so tier three, to do that additional notification once they're ready to do. So there's additional resources, additional time and all that. So, you know, a few options to address their concerns could be if a project, typically those kind of projects would have had an underlying land use approval. So if we have a parties-of-record list already from the first round when the notice was circulated, maybe we could just limit it to anyone who's expressed an interest to follow this project will be notified, and hopefully we have email addresses or not. The other option could be the posted sign itself should be sufficient, but they could add a line, if you want to be kept up and apprised on a monthly basis or weekly basis, you know, whatever that timeframe is, please send us an email at this or sign up for an email at that point. That would forego the actual notification, sending a mail for the contractor, which could be time savings for them. I think we're trying to figure out what's the most efficient way to keep the community apprised, not necessarily to create more burden on anyone. So those are some options, if we, you know, to address that comment.
Yeah, okay, that's great. My perspective as a resident is if there was construction nearby, I might not think to check my mail for that, but I would certainly want to see a sign and use that as a way to understand when the construction was going to happen and who I could contact if I had a problem. So from my perspective, that is probably enough. Let me gather the rest of my thoughts.
Okay. What is the current, we do currently notify residents about certain kinds of projects. Can you explain the difference from currently?
Yeah, I don't think we have consistently had a process in place. So for some projects, like the Talas, you know, Cougar Mountain Middle School, there was a notification that was going out to the HOA, for instance, that would disseminate that information to the community about the status or anything like that. But it's not consistent, like, for every larger project, we have a process in place. So it's been hit and miss kind of thing.
Okay. Just wondered what it was to compare teams. Go ahead.
Perhaps, Minnie, you could say, what, it will be under Title 18 absent this Code of Conduct?
Yeah, so the current draft of Title 18 just talks about notification during the land use process, not during construction process.
Okay. So this would be a separate notification, which heretofore we've not provided in any kind of consistent way.
Correct.
The code currently doesn't require it. The future code, as drafted, doesn't require it, so this would be something brand-new for these projects. And I think one of the reasons staff is tiering them is because of that notice requirement. If the committee feels an appropriate sign is sufficient, then that's more than we do now, or more than we require now. And if you think the notice makes sense, again, the issues of mail are changing in the world, that's up to you. And certainly, it's an onerous, it can be an onerous process, especially depending on the type of property owner. I mean, though, large construction companies do this all the time, they know who to call, they give the parameters, and for a price, they can do this pretty easily. For smaller companies, less so, because they would know that there are firms out there that specialize in doing this sort of thing. So I don't know, from a staff's perspective, we feel strongly about this. I think, at the end of the day, we just want people to have the information. You know, a website is going to be the single easiest way to do that, a QR code, probably the single easiest way to access the website, so maybe a sign is sufficient.
Yeah, I'm quickly looking into our existing code to see where, if there is anything related to construction. There's a section called "public notification," but it's all Yeah, it's all related to land use that I can tell. Yeah, it's all related to land use that I can tell.
Okay. Well, I think potentially, when this comes back to council, it might be helpful to provide a little bit more information about what, if, if neighboring cities do have any sort of notification for these large projects to, just so we know what our peer cities are doing in that regard, or if they're using, if they're not using mail, that would be good to, to, to know. I, I think for the most part, this contractor code of conduct takes a big step towards letting people know about what the construction is that's going on in their neighborhood and what impacts to expect. And it also helps to let the contractor know about the expectations about being a good neighbor and what that means. And so, just so that everybody's on the same page. So I think overall, I am happy to support this, and I think it's a step in the right direction. I think we'll also learn as we use it a little bit. We'll find out if people are using the QR codes, if they like that, if they're using the email, if they prefer that, or, you know, if we do also use mail, if people have seen the mail, or if that's not the most efficient way anymore of letting people know. So I think if we, if we go forward, then we'll get some more information after, actually having used this code, which will be useful. I appreciate that it went through a public process and a community meeting, and we got that feedback. I think that was very helpful. And overall, I'm very pleased with how this turned out. I think it's a big step in the right direction, and we've been talking about this for a really long time. Councilmember Ray, who was not able to be here tonight, he had, has been interested in this for a long time as well. And so I, I think, we've talked about this for a long time, I'm really happy with how it turned out, and I think it'll be a step in the right direction overall.
Yeah, just real quickly, I did find that there is a section, not in Title 18, but in Title 16, that requires property posting. It says the applicant shall post a notification of construction sign for development, provided minor construction, as defined in a different section, is exempt. And that minor is residential units up to four, 10,000 square feet of agriculture, structures, 4,000 square feet. So these are the flexible thresholds under SEPA is where it's sending, sending us to, which the reference will change in the new Title 18. But if it's exempt from SEPA, then there is no notification on the construction site. But if it's not, then it is. So that's sort of the existing code for posting the sign, not mailing. There's no requirement to mail during construction.
Okay. Thank you for that. I think aligning with our existing thresholds, which is why I was asking about that, that's great. We don't want to, I, I don't think we would want to have a different threshold for every different part of the code. Just makes it easier to use if we have thresholds that apply to multiple things. So that, that's good to know. I, I think the tiers make sense, especially since they're used for other parts of the code. And I, on the question of mailing, I think the sign, I think it'd be good to see what the neighboring jurisdictions do. I think probably the sign is, the sign is a good step in the right direction. It's more than we have currently. And then people who are going by the site and wondering what's going on will see it, which I think is probably, probably adequate. If we see that neighboring jurisdictions send out mailers as well, then might reconsider that. But I think with the information we have, definitely a step in the right direction just with what we have presently without the mailing.
So I think I had talked to one of you that there aren't many places nearby that have a contractor code of conduct. So can you speak to that a little bit? And a sense of, you know, did this come from anywhere, or is it just based on our own experiences?
Well, I think there's the generic idea that contractors should conduct themselves in a neighborly fashion. And I think that many of our community, neighbor communities have that concept. They do not have a quote-unquote capital C, capital C, capital C, I guess it is. They don't have that. I think as we did some initial research, we found that there were pockets of communities outside of the specific Northwest that had the formal code. And so I think we embrace that, because I think what we heard from, again, Councilmember Ray was the first to really bring this forward to the council, but certainly, we've heard from others in the community that there should be something like this. So the other reality is, is that many of these things are required in other parts of our processes, either through pre-construction forms that may or may not be in municipal codes. I think in some communities, we've learned that the form, the, the points in the form are in the code. In others, communities, they merely reference a form that is maintained by staff. So the practical reality of this is that many communities do this already. I think the technology with the QR code now becoming a much easier, more accessible way, I think that's something new, that communities are adopting absent code amendments or procedure amendments, just because it's functional. And I think the private sector probably has taken the lead with this more than the public sector has. So all that taken together, while I would like to say this is going to be innovative, it really is just collecting some processes and procedures together, putting a banner that many Pacific Northwest communities just have chosen, for whatever reason, not to use. But I think it's still important and still makes sense to do. You know, I think the, it seems like the sticking point really is just this notification piece. And, you know, how much is that flyer, postcard worth in the mail versus an appropriate sign that's clear and easy to read and has a clear QR code? I mean, I think that's, it sounds to me that that's the, the issue that you're, if not grappling with, certainly at least considering with all this. And there's probably no right answer, other than, you know, certainly from the city's perspective, we mail things very infrequently, because we hear back from our residents that it gets thrown away, that mail doesn't get checked. I don't know about your families, but my family, it's a couple of times a week, and if that's that. And so it's, if it's something pressing, we might otherwise miss it, because there's nothing but sales papers.
Okay. I've got a few other thoughts kind of on this. When this comes back to council, can you also show what the, like, we have other signage that's required to be posted on a construction site? And so thinking as a resident, the things that are going to be important to me are knowing when the project's going to start and stop, who I can contact at the city if there are problems with, you know, obviously, we want them to contract, contact the contractor first, but if they're not getting a response there, who should they contact at the city? What are the working hours? You know, are they allowed to work on Saturdays or Sundays? Are they allowed to work before 7:00 AM? You know, all of those things. Whether that needs to be on the contractor code of conduct or the other sign is fuzzy from my perspective, because ultimately, it's just about notifying the community. So being able to show council, you know, these are all of the information that would be required with this would be useful for me. And then I think the other kind of big elephant in the room is, what are the consequences? What, what is the proposal if a builder breaks one of these? And, you know, are they supposed to get the contact from the resident and handle it? If they get a contact, are they supposed to notify the city so that, are we keeping track of number of, you know, conflicts? How, how do we address that other than just say, see, these are the rules you agreed to?
That's a good question. You know, obviously, our attempt is that there isn't a problem. So getting ahead of the problem and, and having those clear lines of communication and, and everyone knowing what the rules are will hopefully keep those situations to a bare minimum. But things could arise. Things happen in, in, in the real world and in construction fields and sites. So, you know, there are multiple tools. I mean, there's, of course, the code enforcement avenue of going after them, but the building official has a lot of power in the state. I mean, under the state law, there's only one building official, and in the city, it's James. He could post the site uninhabitable, he could, you know, post a stop-work order, he could, so there are already these built-in, you know, things in the building code that give the city ways to handle it. And stop-work order is a big issue for contractors, because, you know, time is money and their, their construction halts. It, it, it's a huge concern. So if there truly is a life safety issue or anything, you know, those are things we take really seriously, and, and those are handled through that avenue of stop-work order that the inspectors post, you know, are approved by James. If it is not so much a life safety issue, but it's something that has been ongoing and they're not responsive to it, we could go the stop-work order path, or we could, you know, pursue the code enforcement path for them. So, I mean, accountability is going to be important. It's not that we just did it and nobody, you know, they sign a piece of paper and nobody obeys the code of conduct, then, then what is sort of what you're asking? So I think we'll just have to go with the, the idea that people will obey it and will communicate initially, but if things happen, we're prepared to enforce it through those avenues.
So, excuse me for not being a part of this system and everything, but that sounds a little bit wishy-washy isn't the word, but like, a little bit undefined? Is that common, that a builder is, if they're doing something on site and the city is notified about it and kind of comes back and says, hey, you cleared this up, or we're going to do a stop-work order? Is that common? Or is there a situation where they're going to try and sue or, you know, something like that because it's not clearly defined?
Let me, let me save, James, the embarrassment of having to talk about the authority that he wields as the building official. All construction projects are, are, depend on cooperation. They depend on cooperation with the contractor, with the subcontractors, with the city. And so the building inspectors that work with James, they are that representative, and they have the ability to do lots of different things. And in most communities, in most construction projects, there's a respect by the builder, there's respect by the inspector, that if reasonable requests are made, then the contractor is expected to follow them. And a reasonable request would be, you've signed this contractor code of conduct, you are not doing something, you need to do that. There are many, many things that a building inspector requires, and they have those kind of conversations, James, pretty much on a daily basis in, in an active construction site. And that site foreman, the general contractor, maybe the issues with a subcontractor, maybe it's with the delivery issue, it's up to that person working with the building inspector to manage through this. So this is really just another layer of requirements that we're going to be asking both the contractors and the building inspectors to work together on. If there's conflict, they generally work it out. If they don't work it out, our building inspectors, under James' guidance, are not shy about saying, okay, well then, we're going to red-tag this. And, you know, again, it's something that, that they don't wave around every day, but it's something that is there. And in my experience, and the seat that I sit in, you know, eight times out of 10, that generally takes care of things. If there's a conflict, it's usually some third party, some subcontractor, an employee or some contractor, but it gets resolved. So I think what James is saying is this is just another layer that will be put on this. Yes, it's, I wouldn't want to use the word wishy-washy either, but it's just the nature of, of the process. The contractor wants to get their job done, the city's building inspector wants it done safely pursuant to all rules, regulations, codes, you know, there are state codes, all of that that have to be, be done. So our proposal to the administration is that this gets layered on to that, rather than saying there's specific other kinds of fines, because that would then be different largely than anything else we do. So, James, now that I've explained what you do for a living, is there anything you want to add or correct?
No, well, you got it, you got it right. There are, there are some defined things in code, though, like, for instance, working outside of hours. You get your, you get your first warning, and then you get your second warning with a fine with a one-day stop. And you get your third warning with a much bigger fine with a, I don't know, two-week stop. It, it escalates, and those are, those are, are hardcoded in the code. Some of the things that are life safety are a little wish, are a little wishy-washy, but we rely on the experience of the building inspectors. And, and I think Wally's exactly right. The majority of the time, if I get a complaint from someone, I will get it, track it, which is our permitting system, find out who the, the site contact is, get on the horn and call them and say, hey, somebody said you, there, there were drywallers working on Saturday. What's going on? And they'll hang up and call me back, and they're like, yeah, there were, you're right. I will make sure it never happens again. And most of the time, that's where it is. But when it doesn't, sometimes we have to go a little further.
Okay, I definitely regret using the word wishy-washy now that everybody else has too. But I really appreciate explaining that. My only concern there is just making sure that adding uncertainty doesn't, doesn't cause a problem, but it sounds like that's what the relationship typically is, and that it's a close-working relationship. So I also appreciate you mentioning that there are specific penalties and fines for certain things like working outside of working hours. That is one of the things included in the contractor's code of conduct. Do we feel like any, or do we have a sense from the community, like any of these other things are problems that require specific responses? I know City Administrator Bobquist just said, we think we can handle it through the typical relationship, but I wasn't sure whether anything else jumped out.
I, I think it's the communication issue. James described, when a complaint comes to him, that's how it's handled. So are there residents suffering in silence because they don't know where to go? And so people are upset, saying this project is a bad actor because somebody came in and worked on a Saturday. Well, if we don't ever find out, it could have been some subcontractor, whatever the details or circumstances. If we don't know, then we can't take care of it, and that the people responsible for the project, quite honestly, might not have known either. So I think the communication piece is what's so important. And as, as Councilmember Hunt said, the administration agrees that we probably just need to live with this for a little while, too, just to see if there are other issues that come up. We're not really proposing anything new here. Again, we're just kind of putting it all under an umbrella and putting a nice title on it. All these things are things that, that happen now, or potentially could happen now. So I, I think we're comfortable layering it on to the other requirements. We can live with it, we'd be happy to come back in six months or a year and report. And then there are members of the community, some of which who are very active participants in these processes. And I think that if there's a feeling that it's not working, my sense is we will hear from them as well.
Okay. On that note, I think one of the things I've asked is, you know, what the other signage is. I assume somewhere on that other signage is a city contact as well, because I noticed on this, it only has the contractor's name and phone number.
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back with like the, maybe a template of the sign, you know, some sample template, so you can kind of see what it'll look like.
Sounds great. Well, I think I'm ready to sign off on it. I've got picked through all of the areas that I thought were important, so I appreciate that.
Okay, so we had a few specific questions. So I am comfortable with, and I think there's good reasons for the current tiers. Do you agree with that? Okay, nodding. And, and then the other, I think we generally are supportive of the contents and the approach. The only other thing that we talked a little bit more about back and forth was the mailing notification. I will say I went back and looked through our staff memo. There's, from several different perspectives, there's comments about not everyone receives mailed notification, consider other avenues. And then I saw in the signage communication, community members want a clear pathway for communication, but they said, consider balance of notifications, so people aren't over-notified, which will create confusion. I think, given that, and then given also that from the developer's side, they were also concerned about additional notification need, and given that we have this QR code that hopefully is easy for people to, to use, plus the contact information right there on a sign, I think, I think that's the way I'm leaning, is to not do the mailing notification and see, see if the QR code is working, if people are comfortable using that, if it increases awareness about the rules, the, the code. awareness about the rules, the code. And so I think that's where I ultimately have landed. Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I think that meets the needs, and what I would think about if I was a resident near a construction area is, I understand there are signs, and that's where I should go for the information, so.
Okay, great. So then, I think it would be helpful to have, when the information comes back, the request was to have the information about what other information is on signs, and at construction sites, that was your request. And then, my request would to be, to have a little bit of information about if other cities are doing mailers for construction, just so we know what our peer cities are doing. But again, I think, after reading through all of the comments that you collected, which are very helpful, I think we should, for now, go with no mailer and see if the QR code and the sign is increasing awareness and meeting our goals.
And I'll just add to that, I think it says under Tier 2, that signage with contractor name and contact information would be required to post at the site, but no detailed website. So if you could maybe show what signage would look like for a Tier 2 versus a Tier 3, that would, I'm a very visual person, so that would be very helpful for me. Thanks.
We also, so there was a mention of a potential other topic related, but not the same thing, which would be communication around public projects. My feeling is that that can be separated from this. And so, because I do think they are different, I think there are more points of connection with the city, for example, with a contractor that is working on a public project. And so, I think this code of conduct should be, as it's designed for private development. So I'm fine with putting that on a separate track, that conversation about public contractors or contractors on public projects, rather. Are you okay with that? And then we'll proceed with this, going back to council, and then the committee can have an update on the public contractors on public projects separately from this.
Yeah, I think there's certainly been an interest in the community to make sure there is an effective point of contact for public projects. And so I think that's just an internal point of communication for us. I don't know that I need the contractor code of conduct to apply, but I do need effective signage and communication and all of those things, which I think are standards and our goals, anyway.
And if I could just add, you know, our initial discussions internally, we find that sometimes people are reluctant to call the police department. And people shouldn't be reluctant, that those are, our systems are in place, especially for public projects, that if there's something in the right of way, something's gone wrong, people should call the police department. The police department has on-call public works contact information, they can contact community planning and development if need to be. And so as I've talked to, especially our public work staff, that's their feeling, is that maybe we just need to publicize that more, so that if there is a safety issue, the on-call person can be contacted. Does it work perfectly every time? No, unfortunately, it doesn't. But those systems are in place, and they work more often than they don't. And I think we'll look at signage issues anyway, because I think it just makes sense. So we're happy to do whatever the committee thinks is appropriate.
Okay, thank you for that. I think that this, my thought is that we could send this to the council. I think it can be on consent, because I think it's, in my opinion, non-controversial. And I think, if we agree, then it could be on consent with the additional information in the agenda bill that comes back to council. And then, to our committee, if we could have that other piece of the related conversation on the contractors for public projects at a later time, maybe in the spring, then that could kind of close out that complimentary topic. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I think that sounds good.
Okay. All right, so we will do that. Do you have what you, yes?
Just a question to community planning and development staff. I would think that making the 17th of January with the mock-up so the signs might be a little difficult. So if the committee's comfortable, we could maybe wait at one additional council meeting and bring it back on February 6, just to give staff a little bit more time to, because I think you'll have to rely on other colleagues to perhaps help mock-up.
Yeah, we want to think it through and have a good, you know, maybe we'll reach out to the sign manufacturers. So we, yeah, I think a little bit more time would be good to come to finalize the template.
Just one meeting. So we would put this on consent then for February 6, and then come back with the public project discussion sometime this spring.
I think that sounds good to me. Sounds good to us, so that will be, that'll be great. All right, you have what you need from us on this?
Thank you very much.
Great, okay. Then, we have no other regular business items. I do have one announcement, which is that we have another committee meeting of this committee, which is not typical, but will occur later this month. And that is on the 24th of January, and we have two items on the planning calendar. They are Title 18 Executive Summary and Overview, which is ID 1307, and ID 1327, Amending IMC 3.74 Impact Fee Study Update Frequency. So wanted to make sure to announce that upcoming meeting of this committee for later this month.
Madam Chair, we're not sure at this point about the impact fee item, but we do believe that the Title 18 discussion, there may also be, and I don't see the city attorney, she perhaps was going to join us this evening, a need for an executive session with the committee, something we haven't done since we brought committees back. So that's also, and we'll keep you apprised if that would be required as well.
Okay, please let us know. Other than that, do we have any other announcements? Okay. Then with that, we are adjourned at 7:27 PM. Thank you all.